Welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Common Council for the City of Hudson for Monday, June 17th. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll, please, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Virchill.
Here.
District One, Morissette.
Here.
District Two, Yakub is excused. District Three, Bernard is excused. T-Winkle?
Here.
District Five, Hackett?
Here.
District Six, Vanslo?
Here.
Okay, at this point in our agenda, we ask anyone in the view or in the audience that would like to address the council on any item that is not on the agenda, now is the time to come forward and address the council. Is there anyone here that would like to address the council? If not, let's move on to consent agenda.
To approve the regular meeting minutes of June 3rd and the special meeting minutes of June 12th, 2013. To approve the issuance of sixty-seven regular operator licenses for the period June 18th, 2013, to June 30th, 2015, contingent on payment of any outstanding debt that's owed to the city. And to approve the issuance of two temporary operators licenses to be used July 3rd through 6th, 2013, at the Hudson Booster Days event in Lakefront Park. Additional operator license information is available in the Clerk's office on request. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $284,559. Detailed description is available in the Clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website. To approve the renewal and issuance of a taxicab service license to Universal Transportation LLC, doing business as Ninja Cab Company, and to FDS Enterprises Incorporated, doing business as A Taxi, for the period July 1st, 2013, to June 30th, 2014. To approve the issuance of thirteen taxicab drivers' licenses for the period July 1st, 2013, to June 30th, 2014. Additional taxicab driver license application information is available in the Clerk's office on request. To approve the renewal and issuance of an amusement device license to Kurt A. Lindberg, doing business as Namco Entertainment Incorporated, and permits for ten devices located at the Hudson 12 Theater. To authorize forth engineering to prepare the bid documents and advertise for the 2013 street maintenance project at a cost of $5,100, as submitted in their work order. To place on file the May financial report from the finance officer and the June 11th, 2000, minutes of the Public Utilities Commission. That is all.
Are we to pull that denial from operators' license?
I didn't read that one, so that would be a separate item.
Move for approval, then. Second. Okay, roll call.
Vanslo?
Yes.
Hackett?
Yes.
T-Winkle?
Yes.
Morissette?
Yes.
Guess we, it's not on the...
It is not on...
On the regular agenda, because it would have been...
It's part of the operator's...
We can still... Part of the operator, we're gonna, we pulled part of the...
Yeah.
Okay. The Finance Committee recommended denial of the application of Matthew Smith for alcohol license to sell and disperse alcoholic beverages. Mr. Smith is here.
Yes.
And would you like to come up and state your name and...
Hello, Council, my name is Matthew James Smith of 319 Fourth Street, North Hudson. I work at the Agave Kitchen for a Dominic Paul Rhodey. Part of my employment is contingent on this operating license, working for Paul Rhodey. He's very strict in how he operates his business, and that's why it's mandatory to have this, just because he wants everybody to be aware of the laws and how they operate. I am actually, I feel better off now that I've been through my tarnish record, because I understand how the laws work a lot better. I understand how severe over-serving somebody can be, and I was here in front of you, I guess, to ask if there's some way we could possibly work through this. Paul has instilled in us how important it is to not over-serve people, and I am aware of how important the information in this license is, and that's all.
Okay. When did you start there?
I started at the Agave, end of November, 2012.
Chief Jensen, there was a, on your application, it said you had a DUI seven years ago?
Yes.
Says, "We show one in January of 2013."
Okay, so that was, there was three violations on my record within the past twelve years. There was, I believe, like a, an alcohol minor consumption in ninety-nine or 2000, and then there was one again in 2005, and then the most current one, so they're over five years apart.
Right, but there was one in January, not seven years ago?
Yep, there was one in January.
Okay.
And at that time, you were working at Agave Kitchen?
Yes, I was.
Comments? Go ahead.
I'm sorry, through the, through dealing with this and trying to move through it in a timely process, I have had my alcohol assessment done. I'm enrolled right now in the General Dynamic, or excuse me, yeah, the Dynamics class to move through it, through my alcohol assessment. It was proven that I did not have any bit of a drinking problem. It was a fluke, one-time thing. I have a Mad Moms class next Wednesday, so I'm moving through the system right now and ever learning from my mistake.
I just question, why wasn't, why didn't you put that on the application that January? DUI, I mean, were you adjudicated at the time?
It's not, it has not been through the court system yet. It hasn't been, it has not been, how do I say?
You haven't cert, you haven't been given...
I have, yep, yep, so what I'm doing is trying to do my rehabilitation, everything before that, so then when I go in front of the judge in August, we can move forward. So I wasn't officially charged with any crime yet.
So he is not, that is not... Well, he's been charged but not convicted.
There we go, yes, that's...
Right, he's been arrested and charged but not convicted.
I, I just, I, I just feel, Matthew, that, you know, you appear to be trying to work this out, but I'd like to see some more time to prove to me that you really are taking this seriously.
Okay.
And that you do understand the responsibilities of obtaining an operator's license and some of the repercussions of serving alcohol.
Yep.
Either to minors or to over-serving people. So I, I would like just to see you get about six more months under your belt where you can say to us, "I haven't had any violations for at least a year."
Yep.
And that would give me a little bit more proof that you are taking this, you know, very responsibly.
Okay.
I just don't think enough time has passed for me at this point in time.
I understand that. Is there a temporary operator license, too, that could be in the interim?
I don't think we have a temporary due.
I think that's just a provisional, the statutes provide for a provisional operator's license, but that's just until you've finished your responsible beverage servers course.
Okay.
And so that's not the situation we have here.
Okay.
I think, and Chief Jensen, you can comment if you want, but I think the problem was the recent conviction with the prior convictions shows...
And it hasn't been a conviction yet.
Or the...
When is your, when is your court date? I'm sorry, Kathy, go ahead.
Well, I've said, I need to...
I was just curious, when is the actual court date?
It's the end of August, and the reason it's the end of August is so that I can have my, what the court asked of me, to have fulfilled, which would be the minimum requirements for, you know, my, my case. So that's why it's that late, so I can just go through and take my dynamic course, go see my Mad Mom, and have my alcohol assessment done. And then that information is all available through the court system, if you guys wanted to read what the specialist had assessed during that.
And were you serving yourself the night of the actual incident? I assume you were probably just hanging out.
No, and it was, that, and that's, to not get into much detail, I was working that night, I had, got done working that night, and were allowed to have two beverages after work. Unfortunately, I didn't have any food or anything in my system, so it was just a unfortunate event that had happened that evening.
I guess I'm, I'm troubled with denying it on the basis of this January 13, because he was, was not convicted. I don't think it's our right to deny him on that basis alone, because he wasn't convicted.
No, he's been arrested, that's, and charged.
But he hasn't gone through due process.
No, he hasn't.
That's correct.
So that's, I mean, that's a valid concern.
So at this point, I would be in favor of allowing the license, because I can't make the judgment whether he was or was not. So the one in 2005 and the one in 2004, long enough away that...
That's like eight years ago.
Yep.
What is it that the court is waiting? I mean, if you fulfill your requirements, then what? They're, they won't charge you, or they'll charge you lesser?
Yeah, they'll charge us less, and that's, you know, up to the judge at that point. It's easier for him to make a judgment on me when he sees that I take initiative to go through the steps to get rehabilitated and learn from my mistakes, and then...
Well...
Competence.
So Randy, let me just get this, what if he goes to court in August, and he gets proven, he gets found guilty? Now you've got an operator license with a guilty DUI, and are you going to take the license back at that point in time?
No, but I just, how can we, we can't make that decision, that...
Well, I'm, I guess I'm making it based on our police chief's recommendation.
Mm-hmm.
And it was a, it was a Hudson Police Department that arrested him, and our police chief is recommending denial.
He hasn't gone through due process, and maybe there's something, knock down reckless driving. Who are we to say? And if this is his only job, and this is his livelihood, I guess I have a question. I'm not going to pretend to be the judge.
Well, he can't work without this operator's license. Is Paul gonna let him go?
I have no idea.
Yeah. I, I just worry that if he gets proven guilty in August, you know, and we've issued a license...
And that's a very valid question, but...
That's my, that's my concern.
It's part, it's kind of the whole package. There's a history here, probably, the difficulty is, the recent incident is very recent, and so if it had been just the two, and it, now you have facts that it was related to work.
Yeah.
But in terms of whether he can work, that's up to his employer, but he's not required to have an operator's license if he's under the supervision of someone with an operator's license, because he's been working up until...
Mm-hmm.
But clearly, you're taking all the steps to, as recommended by the court, and working towards, you know, whatever you need to do and when this happens.
And then through the process, I've learned, I think, a lot more than the program that, excuse me, the program that you take online. I just, I understand how more severe this is than I think a lot of the other people that are applying for this. Do you understand what I'm trying to say? I'm, I know it had happened, and I'm sorry it happened, I'm embarrassed it had happened. It's hard enough just dealing with the fact that this has happened, and I, you know, eight years, and to get this and be able to continue working and helping my coworkers at the Agave, I think would be a good move, and that's why Paul, I think, wants me to have this license.
So my question to you, then, will, what will you be able to do at Agave without this license, and can you reapply for it in August after the court?
He can serve drinks at, he just can't be the sole person there.
So it would limit my, my hours, and it's also kind of a black eye for me when it comes to scheduling, because things would have to be rearranged, and it would just be a constant struggle, and what I'm hoping for personally is that it doesn't come to that, because it's just one reason that it's an inconvenience on day-to-day business for the quality of service and what I provide for the restaurant.
Okay, anybody need any more information?
Does Marty want to weigh in on this, or...
Marty, you wanna?
Is that fair?
Sure. Well, he's acknowledged that he was drinking that night after work, and so I think you can take into account the history of alcohol use, and it's related to his licensing.
And his comments on...
Pardon?
And his comments on it as well?
Yes, oh, yes. I mean, the applicants?
No.
Oh, oh, sure.
Right, and, and like I said, if this incident wouldn't have come up in January, I would have signed recommended approval and been on the way, but obviously, when you, when you run his driving status, it does show up on his driver's license as an arrest. There is part of it under the prohibited alcohol concentration PAC, which he didn't object to, which now shows up on his record. So that part of the, the statute has been resolved through administratively through the state, so I could use that. If you, if we didn't want to use a conviction, he's already gone past the thirty days and been found by the state to have been in violation of the PAC or prohibited alcohol concentration law, which is over .08. So if you want to use it that way. Listening to the council, I, I see some weighing back and forth. Is it, Catherine, is it possible, since he's committed to this, having it a restriction, that he can only have operator's license restricted to Agave? And if he loses his employment, he loses his license?
Oh, I, I don't know, to be honest, I would have to...
Because the operator's licenses that you get in the city goes anywhere.
Yeah, it goes anywhere and any, correct.
So if we tied it to his employment at Agave, once he lost his job, we could...
Well, we don't know anything about, I guess I'm not clear on why you're saying he's going to lose, lose his job.
Well, I know he, he talks about Paul Rhodey being one of the employees that pushes for this, and he has been very good for the police department in pushing that type of alcohol education, making sure his servers don't over-serve and so forth. So if Paul's going to keep an eye on him, he will do that. So if there's, turns out to be an issue, and he gets terminated, Paul would let us know right away, and we could pull his license.
Okay.
But I just, putting that as a suggestion, that's up to you.
Yeah, I, I just don't know, to be honest, that you can restrict it to one, one employer, because he could lose his job for a variety of reasons unrelated to serving of alcohol. And I think you should issue the license based on whether he meets the criteria.
Well, it seemed to me that if we issue it and anything else happens, then that's going to be it. I mean, we won't give him another chance, I wouldn't think, after this. So either we give him a chance now, or we don't give him a chance.
Well...
And I see what Rich is saying by waiting, but that doesn't really solve the employment problem.
I mean, he would be subject to the same revocation-type proceedings if you issue the license and then he's convicted. You could...
We would have to go through the complete process.
Yeah, you would. So that's, and then I think the basis would be habitual law offender, that's a definition under the statute.
I would be okay delaying this application until after the trial date in August, and then we'll know whether he's found guilty or not, and I think that makes a big difference here. And if he wants to delay his application till after the trial and bring it back, if he's found innocent, I'm okay with that.
And I don't know how, how would, I guess that's up to him, right, or...
Right, we would just have to deny it.
Well, I think what you're getting at, you wouldn't have a denial, the council wouldn't be denying it at this point. You'd be postponing it if that would help for his employment. Is that what you're getting at, Rich?
Yeah, mm-hmm. In other words, we haven't said that they can't get his operator's license, it's just we're saying at this time, he can't get it, and then potentially after the August trial date, that may be different. You know, the situation may be different after the August trial date.
Do we need to define a denial, or why we...
Yeah, I think you want to say why, why it would be denied, and it's the history and prohibited alcohol content violation.
So just to be clear, from my standpoint, it's, these are annual licenses, it's...
Correct.
Every, no?
Uh, two years.
Two years.
Two-year deal, okay.
I'm, I'm going to make a motion that we, I guess if we can delay, considering the application, until September 1st, or until after the trial date, and we have that additional information to reconsider.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussions on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the, consider application of Hudson Grill LLC for alcoholic beverage license for Bob Smith Sports Club. Hudson Grill application, I think you all have that in your packet. The Finance Committee recommended approval excluding the outside patio area, as we have not seen a plan for that, I don't think. Does that be correct? Yep. And the owner applicant is here, if you want to, if you want to say anything, or...
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Chief Jensen.
Yes, I apologize for missing the finance meeting, I was in traffic and just missed you folks voting on it, I guess, so...
Why don't you give us your name and address?
Tom Temaro, 2921 Marine Circle, Stillwater, Minnesota.
Okay. Well, I think welcome to Hudson, because we haven't approved it yet, but we approved it...
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome to Hudson, and questions, any questions for anyone? Can you give us an insight on what you're planning, or, because we have to strike the outdoor patio proposal, because there wasn't anything.
Sure, we anticipate working with the planning commission over the next several months to work out a patio plan, and then hopefully, spring of next year will be the opening of the patio. So we've been working with Danny D. Arnold and David Gray on that process right now. So regarding the, the sports club itself, basically, we look at it as a historic property with a lot of character, and we would really like to peel back the layers, is the way I like to put it, and maybe get back what it was maybe years earlier to the, the current seventies motif, I think, that is going on in there right now. So we're thinking of doing it over a period of time. It's not going to be a shutdown remodel-type situation. We'd like to make changes over time, and eventually, the goal is to have a rustic lodge-themed restaurant bar with a lot of memorabilia and historical items that hopefully we can find from the Hudson and surrounding areas, so. And the name, we're, we're not sure, we've gone back and forth, sports club or not sports club, and we get a lot of different opinions from locals or non-locals, so, but, so maybe there might be a name change down the road at some point, too.
Thank you. I'll move.
Motion, yeah, move to approve with the striking of the patio.
Okay, is there a second?
And the receipt of the Wisconsin seller permit?
Oh, yes, and the receipt for the sellers.
I'll second that.
Okay, second by Kurt.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Consider bids received for standalone, oh, that's, we postponed that. Consider additional funding for roof repair project for the 701st Street Vine Street building. Neil is here to give us the good news.
I think the good news is the project can be completed, hopefully before the snow flies, or almost, we've been assured before the snow flies. But what you have in, in your packet is a proposal from the Garland Company. There are really two proposals there. One is an alternate. The base proposal is in the amount of $381,000, and that would include the installation of a, of a five-ply roofing system on the flat roof, and that would have a thirty-year guarantee. The alternate proposal would be for a two-ply roof that would have a twenty-year guarantee. The Garland Company is the company selected based upon winning a competitive bid that was done by Cobb County, Georgia, and they are, they bid out roofing as a part of a group that's sponsored by the National Association of Counties called U.S. Communities, and that is publicly bid, and they bid out a number, actually, if you look at their bid submittal, it's fifty-six pages of line items based upon, you know, in very, very detail as to what are the components of tearing off and replacing a roof. So all those, and I think in your bid where you see the certain items here, these are line items from those fifty-six pages. So it's a bid cost that was publicly bid by another agency. The other thing that we would need to look at here is funding for the project, and the recommendation from the Finance Committee was to recommend going with the, the better roof, the, the five-ply roof at a cost of $381,000, with the library and its impact fees bearing a portion of the funding. Out of the total cost of $381,000, I'll round it up to $382,000, the, the number that was used when the, when the library moved in, in terms of a percentage of the cost that was based upon need since the needs assessment was done, it was really representative of what percentage is based upon growth within the community since the year 2000. And the factor that was put in there was about thirty-three percent of the community is really, that's, you know, the, the existing growth in our current community happened since 2000 population-wise. So we looked at that, and then the library occupying roughly two-thirds of the usable space of the building, excluding, you know, the, the lower level where the police cars are stored, and, you know, if you take that factor, you come up with roughly twenty-one percent of the cost should be attributable to growth, and therefore reimbursable through impact fees. So what the committee recommended was of the three hundred, roughly $82,000, eighty-two thousand of which would be, would come back from impact fees. Unfortunately, right now, the impact fee balance for the library only has $67,000 in it, so the recommendation was that we would, you know, essentially charge the impact fee account the full eighty-two, but reimburse, be reimbursed the difference at a later date. So when you come back to the net for the city, the city's cost would be roughly $300,000. We've already appropriated $100,000, so we would need an additional appropriation from the city of $200,000. We do have representatives from the Garland Company here who can explain the more technical details about the roof and the need for the roof.
Questions? John or Kurt?
From the documents I saw, there's holes in the flat part of the roof, and the metal's breaking apart, and, yeah, it doesn't look good. Is that normal wear and tear for that kind of roof? It's all breaking down at once.
Sure, why not?
I, I guess, I'm Brian Scoog with the Garland Company, Troy Thompson with the Garland Company. The, there's numerous things going on there. One, the roof system that, that is on there on the low slope is forty-mil stick, so it's prone to puncture, lapsing problem. The steel roof system is an architectural, low, low-seam steel system, and not really the best engineering on that. It, it has pretty limited clips that hold it down to the roof, and, and the seam sealer or the cap on top has just let go, so it's not that well-constructed, and probably not that well-designed, to be honest.
Fair enough. So you're going to fix that?
We are, we are going to fix that, yep.
For at least thirty years.
That's cool.
And, and you are the manufacturer of the material as well as an installer?
We're not the installer, we would, we're the manufacturer.
Okay.
Under the U.S. Communities contract, we also perform the general contracting portion of it. So then we're going to go out and bid the other associated trades that go to install the roof per the design.
So under you, though, the material as well as the installation is guaranteed?
Correct.
Through your general contracting?
Right, that's the turnkey. Yep.
Any other comments or questions? Is there a motion to approve? A move to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
And this is, this is the, not the alternate, this is the full-price one.
Correct.
Okay. The thirty-year, I should say.
Yep.
Yeah.
I think we go from a five-ply to a two-ply, and...
Correct.
And we get a ten-year warranty. As Mr. Vanslo pointed out, the difference for the ten years is a pretty, pretty good buy, I think.
Three thousand a year?
Yep.
For 10 more years.
Okay. Kurt, you have any other questions or comments?
No, I was, I was at one of the original meetings and I'm, I'm convinced.
Okay. I don't think anybody doesn't think we need a new roof, right? All right. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, update on projects. Karen?
I just want to say the residents on Grandview Avenue from the 2012 street improvement project may see a little work starting to happen in that area. We did a punch list. Minor items, some sods dying, some holes from where the temporary mailboxes were. There was a concrete sidewalk that was cracked all the way across, so we're going to have them replace that. But pretty simple items that will be done on Grandview Avenue. Private Developments Hudson Center, that's been going along quite nicely. And you can see that curb and gutter has been installed on that road where the old visitor center was. And the sanitary sewer's been tested and, but it still needs to be televised. There's multiple ways we test the sanitary sewer. Red Cedar Canyon, continuing work out there. The water main on Dunbarry Pass has been tested and passed. And there are some homes that are starting to go up on that roadway. Lockwood Court, they're installing the sanitary sewer on that one. And that's basically the update on the projects.
Okay. Any questions for Karen? All right. When will we start the mill and overlay on, on the, some of the roads that we were going to do?
That one, we're going to open bids somewhere around July 31st and have it approved at the council meeting, the August 5th.
Okay.
Council meeting.
All right. Any other questions for Karen? All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Excuse me. Next item is consider jurisdiction transfer portion of stage line road from the town of Hudson to the city of Hudson. Mr. Darnold.
Good evening.
Good evening, Danny.
Jeff Johnson, chairman of the town of Hudson, called to see if the city would take over the maintenance responsibilities for a portion of stage line road, basically from Center Drive, Easterway to the East Proprietary Line of the Hudson Hospital property. This is Ray. Basically, information tonight, we will need to prepare a resolution, bring it back for council consideration. We wanted to give the town some comfort that we're initiating this jurisdictional transfer. Again, you know, the city's benefiting from the property taxes of the hospital. So at least in my opinion, we should be maintaining the road in front of it. This area will include the, the area of the modern roundabout, which will be the main entrance into the hospital when that's done. So I, I guess my personal recommendation is to approve the jurisdictional transfer. We will need a resolution to do that. And Kathy and I will double check to make sure all the correspondence with the town of Hudson, St. Crook County, and if there's any necessary, if the state of Wisconsin Department of Transportation, that'd be taken care of. So we'll bring it, the resolution back to the common council for consideration. Just want to make sure if there's any concerns. I did visit with Tom Zulli, our public works director. The section of road, we take, even though we don't have the jurisdictional responsibility, we maintain the lights, street lights on it. We do some plowing on it when, generally some of these common areas, you know, whoever's first goes ahead and does it. So sometimes the city's piling it, sometimes the town will have it piled. But, you know, it's Ray, it's Ray our section of road from now on because of the annexation. So we'll, we'll be taking that over.
Does anyone have any concerns about it? It just seems like the right thing to do. It's our, it should be our road.
Now also, you know, that section of road would be added to our mileage for state aid. So we'll be adding approximately a little less than a half mile of additional road length to our state aid's formula.
Okay.
Yes, Kathy?
That section of road is in the city limits.
Yes.
Yes.
So it abuts town property on one side and city property on?
It abuts the state, it abuts town, which, it abuts the federal highway right of way, the I-94 right of way. Actually, it's part of the I-94 right of way. So yes.
The other side is the city of Hudson. We've annexed that in.
Yeah, right. So I'm curious as to why the town retained jurisdiction.
Well, probably because they were getting the mileage on the state aids.
Yeah. So anyway, those issues will work out and figure out the proper procedure.
Yeah, it requires a resolution. But I want to give Jeff some assurance that we initiate the project.
Anybody have any?
Process as quickly as possible.
I don't think we need a resolution tonight.
No, we don't. We don't have one prepared yet.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Just for information purposes.
Anybody have any questions for Danny on that? Communications from the mayor. If, the next thing, Danny and Jim Schreiber, Tim Caruso, Devin Willie, who else was there, Danny, with the school district? I think that's about everybody from the city. We met with the county, the town, and we met with the school concerning the UU and walked through a lot of the information there. So just for an update, Rich couldn't attend because he was at a public safety meeting that night. So just for your information, we're, we're moving forward on that and we'll see what, what comes back from that meeting. It was a good information of all the information that needs to be done and projects that have to be approved by various parties within the governmental units. Also received a letter from Jerry Adams, who is president of the Senior Citizens Center here in Hudson. On behalf of the Hudson area senior citizens, I want to express our appreciation to you and the city council for approving an additional $500 to the money appropriated to us. Your consideration is deeply appreciated. Jerry Adams, president of the board directors. And I think Randy was, led the charge on that one. So another letter that I received, and I won't give you the, the name, but it was, Dear Mayor Burchill, very early in the morning on May 2nd, Hudson's Fire Department paid a call to me as a result of a 911 summons. Engines number 3162 and 3163 pulled up to my little house and dispatched two men. Thankfully, my emergency was a minor one. Easily solved, my levels of anxiety and perpetuation were quickly, were quickly alleviated. I regret I failed to get the names of the two firemen who checked my house for carbon monoxide levels because they are the reason for this letter. I can't say enough about, enough good about these two fellows. Calm, kind, efficient, clearly good teammates. They're a credit to their excellent training and to themselves. They are also another example of the remarkable service and advice and courtesy I've received without fail from all the city services in Hudson since I moved here in Chicago in 2007. Your staff in the fire department, police department, water streets, services are exemplary. They do us all proud. So, you know, we do get compliments and thank you folks that do such a good job. The streets, the police, the fire, sewer water. So we do get letters once in a while. So that's all. I had any other council members' comments? City attorney?
Yep.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
We're adjourned.